Good evening, everyone. They will call the meeting to order the November 4, 2020, Frasier Planning Commission meeting to order. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Resources, MDHHS issued an order on October 9, 2020, that imposes social distancing and capacity restrictions on indoor gatherings of more than 10 people. And the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, MDLEO, issued emergency rules on October 14, 2020, regarding remote work by employees when feasible. In addition, the city of Frasier has declared a local state of emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. To ensure against exceeding the capacity restrictions and in the interest of achieving the goal expressed in the Michigan Department of Health and Human Resources order and the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity rules to protect the public health, particularly during a local state of emergency, the Frasier Planning Commission will meet electronically this evening, Wednesday, November 4, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in accordance with the Michigan Open Meetings Act, as amended on October 16, 2020, using Zoom for video conferencing and public access. This notice is required to ensure that those wishing to observe and/or participate in the meeting have the opportunity to do so. The public can participate via the Zoom application, internet access via the Zoom website, and/or via telephone using the Zoom telephone number and meeting ID. The public will be able to hear Planning Commission members and will be permitted to speak for up to five minutes during the public participation portions of the agenda. Please note that up to five minutes during the public participat- I'm sorry, please note that callers and viewers will automatically be muted and must remain muted until called upon to speak by the chair. Written comments will be accepted prior to the date and time, no later than 4:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting by the Building Department at zoning@micityoffraser.com, which is the method by which members of the public may contact members of the public body to provide input or ask questions on any business that will come before the public body at the meeting. Public hearing comments will be heard during any public hearing that is conducted during the meeting, and other comments will be heard or reviewed during public participation. In the event, a change in the status of statewide or local states of emergency, the Planning Commission meeting may be changed from a remote meeting to a live in-person meeting to be held at Fraser City Hall, 33,000 Garfield Road, Fraser, Michigan, 48026, on the same date and at the same time. The city will post notice of any change in method of conducting the meeting from a remote meeting to an in-person live meeting. And/or change in the meeting place for the meeting to the city's website, Interests, parties should periodically check for such changes or contact the city clerk's office at 586-293-3100. The city of Frasier and the Planning Commission thank all of you for your understanding and support as we all attempt to navigate these challenging times together. Can we all say pledge of allegiance together? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, just, and just for all. Thank you. Agenda item number two is roll call. Ms. Traxler, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Barr.
I'm here.
And just as a remember reminder for those who weren't here at the beginning of the meeting, there is a new requirement that and when you state that you're present, that you note that you're attending remotely from, insert the name of the county, city, township, or village in Michigan or another state if applicable.
You want me to start again?
Yes.
Joanne Barr, and I am attending remotely from Frasier, Michigan, for the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Cook.
Don Cook, attending remotely from Frasier, Michigan, which is in McComb County.
Chair Zarnicki.
Kathy Zarnicki, I am attending remotely from city of Frasier, Michigan.
Commissioner Farina.
Frank Farina, attending from Frasier, Michigan, McComb County.
Commissioner Kyle.
John Kyle, attending remotely from Frasier, Michigan, to McComb County.
Secretary Perry.
Ed Perry Jr., attending remotely from the county of McComb in the city of Frasier, Michigan.
And Commissioner Warrenick.
Randy Warrenick, attending remotely from Shelby Township in the county of McComb.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone is present. Agenda item number three, approval of the agenda. Does there any public comment or would approve of the agenda as is? I do have a comment if no one else does. I'm asking if we can revise the agenda so we can entertain agenda item 6A and agenda item 7A as they correlate to each other so that we can hear the presentation on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment and then open up the public hearing. Are there any other revisions? Any comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as revised. Or I can make that motion. I'll make the motion and I'll take support for it.
I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been moved by Chair Zarnicki and support by Commissioner Farina to revise the agenda to entertain agenda item 6A and agenda item 7A simultaneously. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? CNN, Ms. Traxler, can you take a roll call, please?
Chair Zarnicki.
Yes.
Commissioner Farina.
Yes.
Commissioner Barr.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook.
Yes.
Commissioner Kyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
Yes.
Commissioner Warrenick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item four are my opening remarks. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda that was posted at the city hall. It is important to let everyone know that the Planning Commission is created by state law. The commission is comprised of seven members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. When roll call is conducted this evening, as you saw, the Opening Meetings Act requires each member who is attending to announce, who is attending remotely, to announce that he or she is attending remotely and from what county, city, township, village of which he is attending from, he or she. The role of the Planning Commission is to plan and promote the efficient coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We are not here to negotiate with applicants or allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the Planning Commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others, depending on the nature of the requests and whether all the standards in the zoning ordinance have been met. The Planning Commission may also impose conditions on a proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are met. Other individuals here this evening are representatives from the legal firm of O'Reilly Ransilio, PC, city attorney clerk, Ed, I'm sorry, city attorney clerk Andrews, Ms. Alyssa Albright, and Mr. Dylan Church, and representatives from McKinnon and Associates, Ms. Sarah Traxler, and Mr. Paul Urbil. We do have a public hearing on the agenda tonight, so I will go forward and state the facts for the public hearing. The procedure followed by the Planning Commission for public hearings first involves the city planner providing an overview of each case. After the overview is completed, the applicant will be asked to provide additional information and answer any questions the commission members may have. At the commissioner's questions, the public will be invited to speak. Each person will have one opportunity to speak, must only speak directly to that specific case, and must only address the commission, not the applicant or anyone else in attendance. If you have questions, please direct them to the commission, and we may ask for answers to your questions if they are relevant to the factors we are required to consider. After the public has had an opportunity to speak, the commission members may again ask questions of the applicant or the planning staff, and then the commission will consider the motion. Agenda item number five is approval of the minutes, September 21, 2020. Are there any comments of the minutes as prepared? And if not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as prepared.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from September 21 meeting as printed.
And do I support?
I'll support.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Commissioner Kyle and support by Commissioner Warrenick to approve the September 21, 2020 minutes as printed. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? CNN, Ms. Traxler, can you take the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Kyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Warrenick. Commissioner Barr. Commissioner Barr, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. No, the screen just kept coming in and out. It kept shutting off and coming back. So I completely lost what you were saying.
Okay, we're on the minutes approval.
Oh, yeah, I approved the minutes. That's no problem.
Okay. Commissioner Cook.
Yes.
Commissioner Zarnicki.
Yes.
Commissioner Farina.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Now move to agenda item 6A. Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Article 12, Section 32-170 Subparagraph B3 and A and B4, to allow drive-through service for fast food restaurants that are not in a freestanding building, as well as Agenda 7A, zoning ordinance amendment, Article 12, Section 32-170 Subparagraphs B3 and B4, to allow drive-through service for fast food restaurants that are not in a freestanding building. Mr. Urbil, would you do your presentation, please?
Yes, sure. This language originated or is a response to development pressure that's occurred over the last couple of years of development proposals that has occurred over the last couple of years for end cap drive-throughs for restaurants in multi-tenant buildings along commercial corridors, especially near 15 Mile and near the intersection of 15 Mile and Utica Road. As you mentioned, Chair Zarnicki, the amendment would eliminate the requirement that these drives, restaurants are located in a freestanding building. We, after per pending consideration of public comment, we would recommend approval to the city council. You, the commission has the option to vote to recommend approval, approval of modifications or denial.
Thank you, Mr. Urbil. Are there any questions, Mr. Urbil?
I have a question.
Commissioner Farina.
Yeah, you said mounting pressure. What does that mean?
Maybe pressure is the wrong word. There were development proposals that came through that were approved, and I think the ordinance, this revision, is in response to make those developments, which were found to be desirable and have been built allowable by the, by ordinance.
And Chair.
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
My recollection also was that when, 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 when one of those projects came up, Ms. Traxler indicated at the time that she thought that the, that the Fraser provision was kind of, kind of out of sync with, with development patterns and that, and that while in the first, for many years, it was thought that fast food restaurant type uses would shouldn't be in multi-tenant buildings, but as the market changed and so forth, it became apparent that those would all often work reasonably well in the end caps of shopping centers and, and as Sarah has tried to do in many other instances as well, is try to keep Fraser's ordinances up to date with what some of the market trends are with respect to development of property. And that's what I remember when we discussed it a while ago.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Commissioner Farina, you have your hand up.
Yes, Sarah.
Yes.
That's my recollection is kind of also is you were trying to lead us in that direction. Is that still the direction you think the market is going?
That's right. I think even in smaller retail buildings that are existing, you will actually often see in similar communities that a new tenant would like to establish a drive-through window on one of the end tenant units in order to occupy that space. So I think it's just, you know, changing expectation in business that folks might want drive-throughs more often. Now, we're not suggesting that you change where drive-throughs are allowable right now, but rather in districts where they are allowed to potentially allow them in, you know, the, not in standalone buildings.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, I will open up the public hearing for the proposed zoning ordinance. Ms. Traxler, is there anybody in the audience who wish to speak to this?
There is no one in the audience, and we were not made aware of any comments that were submitted to the city, nor did any comments come into the zoning email that was on the revised agenda.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Traxler.
You're welcome.
So I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. If there's no other discussion, entertain a motion to forward this proposed zoning amendment to our city council.
I will make a motion to approve article or not approve to move to city council approval for Article 7, Section 32-170 Subparagraph B3 and B4 of the zoning ordinance, number 275, as, as printed.
79.
Number 279 shall be amended as read. Yeah, it says that around, under Section 1.
I second.
Can you change that to Article 12 instead of Article 7?
Oh geez, I'm so sorry. Yeah. Yeah, let me start over.
No, no, that's fine. You just.
Article 12.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And it's so, it's been moved by Commissioner Kyle and support by Commissioner Farina, I believe. Is that correct, Commissioner Farina?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. To forward our proposed zoning ordinance amendment to city council, any discussion on the floor? If not, Ms. Traxler, would you do a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Kyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Farina.
Yes.
Commissioner Barr.
Yes, I want to say that I am very unstable. I keep losing you. I don't hear the wording. It comes in and out. The screen disappears and comes back. So I am not able to participate in this very much. And I'm not real crazy about changing and giving everybody the opportunity to have a drive-through because I would rather have it on a case-by-case basis. You know, you have to also worry about pedestrians walking around, going to other stores, going too fast. But I'm going to have to withdraw on this one because I'm not able to participate. I'm not even sure you can hear me right now. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You can't.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. I do not have, okay. Yeah, it just, the screen keeps going away. It keeps going into other stuff. And then it tells me your connection is unstable. So I don't know what's happening. I'm having a real problem tonight. I'll just abstain from this one, okay?
Um, Chair Zarnicki, after, after we get through the vote, if, if you would like, I would, I would be able to address one thing in Commissioner Barr's statement.
Thank you, Ms. Traxler. You want to continue with the roll call, then?
Yes. Commissioner Cook.
Yes.
Commissioners Zarnicki.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
Yes.
And Commissioner Warrenick.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the motion carries. Go ahead, Ms. Traxler.
I, I, I fear that as we were presenting this, we may have been going in and out for Commissioner Barr. But just to address the comment that now drive-throughs are not considered on a case-by-case basis, I do want to assure the Planning Commission that we have not changed drive-throughs themselves from a special land use to a permitted land use by right, but rather are allowing them to be proposed as part of a multi-tenant building now. So we're not changing the approval process for drive-throughs, and you will still have the opportunity to receive comment from neighbors and go through the articulated special land use process.
Good.
Commissioner Farina. Do you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Barr, can you hear me?
I'll picture this one out.
Okay, all right. I was wondering if she had any further questions. So thank you, Ms. Traxler.
She's back. Joanne.
Are you there?
You're muted. Joanne, you're muted.
I keep on doing it, and it keeps doing it. And the people disappear, and I get a different screen, and I don't even have this. It says that I am viewing Paul, Paul's screen. That's what it says up at the top. You are viewing Paul Urbil's screen.
You are. Commissioner Barr, you are. And Mr. Urbil is sharing his screen so we understand what we're discussing. Ms. Traxler did have an explanation on the drive-throughs, and I don't know if you heard it, but I'm going to go forward with the agenda and suggest that you speak with Ms. Traxler so you understand what the proposal is on the drive-throughs. Is that okay with you, ma'am?
Yes, I heard most of her, what she said. That I did hear.
Okay, did you have any questions, Ms. Traxler?
No, I have no questions. She explained it well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go forward. Agenda item number 7B, request for comment, Clinton Township Master Plan Amendment, M97, Gross Spec Corridor Design Guidelines. Mr. Urbil, please.
Yes, thank you. In October, Clinton Township approved distribution of a draft amendment to its master plan. And pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, requested come city of Frasier and its other neighbors. The amendment is a set of design guidelines for the M97 Gross Spec Corridor. This, these guidelines were formulated, and this part of the master plan was formulated to address vacant sites along Gross Spec in Clinton Township and the redevelopment of vacant sites. And then also, just to, in general, strive to create a more cohesive corridor in Clinton Township. Staff has reviewed the, the design guidelines, and we found that they are supportive of a lot of the goals that the city of Frasier has for Gross Spec Corridor. The forthcoming draft of the Frasier Master Plan is, considers the Gross Spec Corridor, recommends in the Gross Spec Corridor a flex corridor overlay district that is intended to create the same sort of cohesive development and proper landscaping that is proposed in the design guidelines for Clinton Township. We've provided in your memo, recommended commentary that essentially states that the city of Frasier supports the creation of these guidelines as it will facilitate developing gross spec in a manner that aligns with the city of Frasier's goals and specifically supporting the recommendations that align with the draft of the Frasier Master Plan, which include robust landscaping along the Gross Spec Corridor frontage, high-quality building materials along that frontage for redevelopment, and, and increased pedestrian amenity along the Gross Spec Corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Urbil. Any comments or questions from the ward? Commissioner Farina, is that who?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Farina.
In the little picture handout that you sent out, it said signs, guidance for signage sizes, styles, and locations.
Yes.
But there is no, I didn't see, signs are very near and dear to me, and I didn't see anywhere where that is defined in this.
Right, this, the actual guidelines are located in a document available on Clinton Township's website. I can pull them up to address them if you'd like. This, the thing that we included in the, in the packet is a, just sort of an executive summary of what the scope of the design guidelines are.
Are they, are they going to monument signs? Are they still going on stilt signs?
I think they are recommending monument signs.
I like that. Much cleaner look.
Any other comments?
I think it'd be a really, really good thing. Some parts of Gross Spec don't look real nice. Not to bring it up again, but one of them is the old Dairy Queen on the corner of 14 Mile. It would be nice to clean up through Frasier, continue it through Clinton Township up and through Long Combs.
I agree that the designs or the guidelines are just terrific, and I'd like to see them incorporated, you know, by the city. Mr. Urbil, are these design guidelines that, you know, that Clinton Township is proposing, are they inclusive of our master plan? Or can we go out of the box and create some of our own design guidelines?
They were formulated independent of the master plan, but the, yes, we can definitely make our own as part of the master plan process. We thought that this was a pretty, pretty solid set of general recommendations, but there, they don't obligate the city. You know, we can, we can customize any guidelines in the master plan according to what is best for the city of Frasier.
Okay, all right, thank you. I don't know how our, you know, my co-commissioners, what they, what your feelings are.
Well, could, could we ask that McKenna, look at that, and Sarah, look at that and give us, you know, a recommendation of what should be in our master plan? Is it, is it, you know, you know, fits in with this, this? I like the idea of going down Gross Spec and seeing something uniform because it certainly is not uniform now.
Yes, so we can certainly address that in the master plan. Now is the time if it is a high priority for the city, which I perceive it to be. The first step in the draft that we prepared was creating a proposed overlay future land use designation, which Paul mentioned, but not prescribing specific design standards on a parcel-by-parcel or, let's say, even block-by-block basis. So between now and your December meeting or potentially even in January, kind of based on our team, team members availability, we can most certainly include design guidelines and standards for this corridor and think it would be fabulous. We, we, we think that that would be a great implementation piece and something that is really important to collaborate with your neighbors and especially with MDOT on. So I think that in concert with creating those guidelines, we need to start and promote an ongoing dialogue with the neighbors and with MDOT, especially since they have jurisdiction over the road and really are such important partners in how that corridor develops.
Thank you, Ms. Traxler. Any other comments, discussion? Mr. Urbil, where do we go from here? Mr. Erbile, where do we go from here? Do we um, formally respond to Clinton Township?
Uh, yes, we, we can draft a letter summarizing the comments. These that are on the screen or any others that you may have. And just, just provide a letter of support to their adoption of these guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Traxler, can I um, ask to double check to make sure we have nobody in the audience who wants to speak on this or no comments?
That's right. Um, neither are, are the case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there is no action to be taken on this item. Is that correct? Mr. Erbile, tonight, we don't need a motion or do we need a motion to draft a letter?
Sarah, do we need a motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Uh, sorry, I think Paul was asking me. Yes, I think, I think it would be appropriate. If you agree with the high-level statements, um, you know, that we prepared in the memo that we sent over, we could turn those bullet points into a letter. Next time perhaps we get something from one of your neighbors, we'll just go ahead and put it in a draft letter format so that it reads like the correspondence and you can approve it that way perhaps.
Okay.
But you know, we can very easily turn the um, language that was in the memo into a letter for um, the chairperson or secretary's signature.
Okay, I guess I'm not still, I'm still unclear. Do we need the motion to say, please prepare that letter?
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to get City Council's approval before we commit the city to a plan?
Oh, you're not, um, actually, you're not going to be committing to that. You're basically being asked to provide comment if you have any. So we find that it's um, a nice practice to, to suggest for our clients because um, we think that coordination, um, especially along key corridors like gross spec is a, a important way to make sure that, you know, your, your very high visible areas are properly developed. So we think it's a best practice to respond and um, also think that it's important, you know, to come from Planning Commission. You are responsible for the master plan of the City of Frazier. And what you're basically saying in correspondence with your neighbors is that you are finding whatever they're proposing to put in their master plan to be not inconsistent with your plans and policies. And in fact here, we think that this proposal is consistent with your intended plans and policies along gross spec highway, highway.
My point is inevitably, City Council has to approve the master plan and say yes to what we are asking them to approve. Correct?
You would be asked to comment on your neighbors' master plans irrespective of the fact that you are currently preparing your own master plan. So although we believe that this is a direction in which you're heading, we also can strongly say that we believe that the proposed Clinton Township policies are not inconsistent and in fact are found to be favorable to Frazier.
Good. Good.
Any other discussion? Excuse me. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Cook, please.
I can't find the little finger thing.
That's all right, we got you.
Um, let's say, you know, we're gonna adopt this and everything's cool. Is this only for new building construction? How do we go about existing buildings, try to have them come on board with these plans? You know, the proper landscaping, signs, more high-quality building designs? How, how do we have existing people do this?
Well, I mean, in the, in the Clinton Township design guidelines, this is uh, only for substantial redevelopment or new construction. And I think any design guidelines we would propose as part of the master plan would similarly be as development happens. Uh, I, I think in, in the township, they did this in to um, their desire and their efforts to redevelopment or to redevelop vacant sites that exist in the township along gross spec. But again, sort of the, the comment on these guidelines that we're discussing is simply to to inform the township that we support their goals. Um, and then I think further, as, as the master plan has developed, we can consider guidelines for Frazier.
And here.
So, Mr. Andrews, are you speaking?
Yes, um, I would like, I'd like to indicate that, that if the City of Frazier adopt, adopted similar provisions in its master plan, those would be implemented by zoning text amendments that were consistent with that master, those master plan provisions. And once those master plan objectives were essentially had a method for implementation through the zoning ordinance, then when people came in to get a sign permit or to, or to do a site plan, they would be subject to those revised zoning ordinance provisions that were implementing the master plan provision. So as Paul has indicated, this and Sarah as well, this comment letter relates to the, our planning commission's right and to be able to comment on the adjoining communities' master plan plans. But um, but in terms of implementing that in Frazier, that would be done through revisions to its master plan that would then get implemented by zoning ordinance amendments that were consistent with that because the master plan is a guiding, guiding document. It's not like a a mandatory thing like a zoning ordinance provision is. So you, you, you wouldn't be saying to somebody if you got a site plan, you can't do this because the master plan doesn't say it's okay. And, and, but if the zoning ordinance said you cannot have a, a a pylon sign, you have to have a monument sign. And that was consistent with what the master plan said, then once that zoning ordinance amendment would be effective, anybody coming before the uh, the planning commission would need to comply with that or get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. So the, the implementation is done through the zoning ordinance, not through the master plan.
I got you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, um, I will entertain a motion. What we're doing, we're not adopting anything. We are just looking for a motion to give our support to Clinton Township that we, you know, we do support their design lines.
I moved that we draft a memo to Clinton Township giving our support uh, to the recommendations that they've made in their master plan.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Kyle to give our support through a draft letter or through a letter to the Clinton Township for their design guidelines. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Somebody asked who's gonna sign it? Before, is it gonna be you and the secretary or you, just you or?
Commissioner Farina, I believe the last letter we sent was to the City of Warren. I signed it as well as our secretary signed it.
I think that's where it should be.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Traxler, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Farina?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Chair Zarnacki?
Yes.
Secretary Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Warnock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carried. Agenda item seven, C, Planning Commission Recommendation of Appointments for Commissioner Cook, Farina and Kyle. We have anybody who would like to speak on this? I don't know, Mr. Erbile, do you have any um, presentation on this?
Um, only to say that uh, in past practice, the Planning Commission has made the recommendations to um, appoint to City Council.
Okay, do any of the commissioners who are up for reappointment have any comments?
I, I um, I definitely look forward to working with you all for another two years. Driving down Utica Road the other day, I seen they're starting on the apartments. Taco Bell's starting to go up, National Conrad opened. And it, and it's an honor to be part of, of a commission that, that helps the city grow the way it is.
Right. I feel the same way. It's uh, I, I get a kick out of trying to move the city forward uh, into the future and to help plan for a changing, uh, and to be changing environment to be partnered with McKenna, who keeps us about very well abreast of that. So I, I would really like to uh, continue on with the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Cook, have any comments?
Um, yeah, I agree with both those gentlemen. I'd love to stay on. It is a wonderful thing. Uh, one of the projects that uh, Commissioner Kyle didn't mention was um, on thirteen mile road, they're finally cutting into the building after it's been maybe a couple of years. So seeing that going, because that has been a nice word for a very long time. Kind of gives you a good feeling that you're a part of getting it, getting it to go forward. So hopefully you guys recommend us. And just stay on.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make recommendation, but do we need to do these individually?
No, no, you can do it all together, Mr. Warnock.
Okay.
I have a question. Does, has everybody put their application in? Because they're gonna want, want that at City Council. And it, she's, the City Council meeting is next week and she's trying to get this stuff on, on the uh, on the docket for next week, so.
I turned mine in.
Yeah, mine too.
I did mine.
Okay.
Okay, so I can make my recommendation then. I'd like to make recommendation then to reappoint Commissioners Cook, Farina and Kyle to continue on uh, City of Frazier's Planning Commission. That's it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Warnock and support by Commissioner Perry to ask the Frazier City Council to reappoint Commissioners Cook, Farina and Kyle. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? If not, Ms. Traxler, roll call, please.
Commissioner Warnock?
Yes.
Commissioner, Secretary Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Barr? She might be frozen. I'll try and come back and.
She's unmute.
Okay, I think she really is frozen. Um, Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Chair Zarnacki?
Yes.
Commissioner Farina?
If I, yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Kyle?
Yes.
And Commissioner Barr? Oh, I think she froze again.
No, she's not frozen. I can see her moving. It's her, she's muted.
Can you unmute her, Ms. Traxler? I'm not sure if you can or not.
I can only ask to unmute.
Okay.
I think we might just record this as.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I mean. It's crazy. And then it comes on and says, uh, you are muted. And then it says other stuff. And then it goes to like the original, press here and we'll explain what a, what a Zoom is. I'm saying, where is this coming from? And then I wait and it brings me.
And she just lost her. When she does come back, we, we might want to tell her that I think she has weak wifi.
That's exactly what it is.
Yes. Ms. Traxler, I would suggest that we just say that she was not remotely connected at the time of roll call. And let's move forward, okay?
Okay. I mean, I've been on Zoom before. I've never had this happen. This is crazy. I was just going up and down. You know, words, talking, every third word I don't hear. It sounds like they're guttural. It's, and, and then sometimes it's okay. So it's really crazy.
Ms. Barr, if you, this is Kathy, the Commissioner, the Chair. Can you hear me at this point?
I can hear you fine, yes.
Okay, we are halfway through our roll call, trying to um, get your approval to go ahead and ask City Council to reappoint Commissioners Cook, Farina and Kyle. Do you agree to that?
Yes, and I was in the middle of saying I agree and I lost the screen. I said I agree and the screen went away.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barr. We're gonna move forward. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go to agenda item number eight, unfinished business. City of Master, City of Frazier Master Plan. Ms. Traxler, I believe that's yours.
That's right. I am, um, if you'll give me just one moment, I am switching presentations to the separate presentation we made for the master plan review. Okay. Sharing my screen. And it should be there. Can everyone see the turquoise cover?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, Danielle, uh, and I have been working, um, as you're aware, over the last number of months and certainly um, in earnest over the last couple of months to really get the foundation for your draft master plan in place. What I asked Danielle to do for this evening was to put together a presentation that we could describe as really an overview of the proposals contained in your master plan. First, however, we wanted to share highlights from the results from the survey, which you have not received yet. Um, and then we wanted to um, deep, deep dive into those master plan highlights. Um, finally, just to talk through the schedule um, that we included in the memorandum in your packets. So just to start off with the key conclusions that we've drawn from the survey and then I'll get into a little bit more detail. Respondents did agree um, with prior master plans that the development of the central business district should be a major focus of the master plan. So that was one um, concept that we wanted to test um, during public engagement. Something that really rose to the surface was that many respondents noted a concern with the speed of traffic throughout town on um, numerous types of roads. In terms of people's feelings towards Frazier in general, we can conclude that many people felt that their needs are being met in the city in terms of a host of items, including housing options, transportation, neighborhood safety, walkability and more. As it pertains to neighborhoods, survey respondents noted um, not heavy concern, but minor concern with some specific infrastructure elements such as sidewalks, roads and traffic calming and reduced speeds and need for that. And then also a desire for increased code enforcement within the neighborhoods. Finally, um, especially in written comments, I believe, many respondents expressed concern about the rising cost for you know, their share of utilities and what they pay for their access to utilities in the city, especially water. So in terms of responses, we received two hundred and forty-three responses to the survey. Most respondents um, were on um, the older side between the ages of fifty-five and sixty-four. You know, safely in, I think, the uh, baby boom generation. So when we say most respondents, um, we actually mean that the age group with the largest share of responses was between the ages of fifty-five to sixty-four. So a full quarter of our responses was in that ten-year period. Over fifty-eight percent of respondents do not have children living at home. So we did see you know, childless families or individuals responding primarily. You know, childless uh families or individuals responding primarily. Um there was strong participation for for neighborhood planning district number one. Which makes sense as you can tell it is also the largest um geographic area in terms of the way that the the neighborhoods are broken out. And um you know, we found it um I think positive. That safety was ranked the number one best aspect of Fraser's neighborhoods. My neighbor, my neighbors was the second best thing out of the questions. The quality of housing was ranked third and then walkability was ranked fourth. So people feel safe, they enjoy their neighbors. They think that there's high quality housing and um walkability was uh the fourth um best aspect of your neighborhoods. Um I think I see Chairs are necky taking notes and I'd be happy to email out this PDF too right after the meeting and we can. You know, just make sure that you you all have access to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um so deep deep diving even deeper into the neighborhoods. Over forty-eight pers- respondents actually didn't just say that their neighborhoods were safe, but rather um very safe. So that was an interesting finding. Um the same percentage of folks said that sidewalks are important. But should not be required everywhere in the city as a matter of policy. So this is actually, I think, um a nuance that is, you know, a very direct question. That is something that we should confront um as we're marching along in drafting the master plan. Now, um you know, somewhat um contradictory, I guess you could say. Or an extra layer of consideration is that about forty-four percent, so a similar number. Think sidewalks should be installed wherever none currently exist. So. I would say that there's, you know, kind of a split in terms of whether um sidewalks should be filled in in the city or not. Um when we ask people about, you know, their feelings about whether their neighborhoods are changing or not. Just under forty-eight percent said that their neighborhood is not changing. While thirty-two and a half percent said that their neighborhood is becoming a little worse. So that's around eighty percent of responses between those two categories. And then, you know, the extreme categories were that my neighborhood is becoming better. And my neighborhood is becoming very much worse. So you saw eighty percent. Of folks kind of in the middle saying that their neighborhood is staying the same. Um and then that their neighborhood is becoming a little worse. Thirty-five percent of respondents um said that the city is getting a little worse. So for context, um one thing we find with surveys and with public engagement. We've we've actually um studied this uh in other places, actually. To a great extent in one of my other client communities, the city of Birmingham. We have found that as respondents age. The older age brackets actually tend to very consistently have more negative respondents. Responses to questions like the ones that are asked here. So um I I offer that. Not to put rose colored glasses on these responses, but rather to sort of. Plant a seed of context which we have kind of seen proven in in numerous communities. Okay, and then in regards to Fraser's housing. As a strong majority said that the current housing options in Fraser meet their needs. Fifty-seven respondents noted that they would like to live near active areas but not too close. So that's sort of like a. A way to gauge people's preference and I I would say that that they're living in the right place, right? A suburban community like Fraser. Almost forty-two percent of respondents said they would support focusing housing attraction efforts in the downtown area. And that's something that we've tried to carry forth into the future land use plan. In regards to transportation, about fifty-four percent said they occasionally experienced traffic congestion. So here's where you see a little bit of a um a uh contrast. Whereas folks said speed is too fast. You know, only fifty-four percent of people said that they occasionally experience congestion. So um I think it's an interesting thing to know as we um move forward and talk about implementation and prioritization. Is it congestion or is it speed? You know, that is is particularly of concern. Finally, um I it probably won't come as a surprise that basically all respondents utilize a passenger vehicle as their primary method of transportation. And sixty percent um say they also walk. So um you do have walkers. So um those were our um key takeaways and. I might actually pause at this point and ask folks. When we send around this presentation, would you like me to send over? I think it's something like a forty. Or forty-five page um detailed report of the survey responses. Is it? Does anyone want to dive deeper into the details in the data? If only one person, okay, yes, okay, that's good enough. So we will share the results from Survey Monkey. Which puts it into a nice report.
Ms. Traxler, can I ask you a question, please? With the survey, when you um asked about the neighborhoods and well, there were two um notations of saying that the neighborhoods are getting a little worse. And um I think just, I don't know, if there were, there were two phrases, little worse, I guess. And and the city, whole city is getting worse. Do you know what they meant by getting worse?
Nope. So that actually is open ended and it's just sort of to take the temperature on how folks feel about about Fraser. Now, you can, you can see in the responses, the actual elements that think. People think should be improved. So we have people's um perceptions here. This is this uh table, this bar graph on the screen, which you'll see in the report. We asked about parks, safety, parking management, speeding, traffic, sidewalks. And street improvements, accessibility, bike facilities, noise and stormwater. And the gray bars are category, people who responded saying that these things require major change. Require oranges requires moderate change and we blue is requires no change. So the things that people noted in the same section are things like speeding. Street improvements and um you know, parks and then. Things that require, most people thought required no change were parking management, noise, accessibility and bike facilities. So you can, you can see answers to specific questions, but these are sort of to take the temperature like, hey. Is Fraser moving in the right direction?
I can't read the sir, the the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh one from the left.
Yeah.
Why? What is that category?
That's improve streets.
Well, well, I understand that category.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. So you know, it looks like fifty plus three, about eighty-five percent of folks. Think it requires moderate and major change combined. So it requires change.
You know, you wonder if if that has something to do because. Utica Road in fourteen has been under construction for long and there's so much negativity on Facebook about it. If that had anything to do with with some of these responses.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's something um. It's something that um we often wrestle with and I think as, you know, appointed and then, you know, council as elected officials. You are using this as one piece of information. As you craft the goals and objectives, policy, land use policies. Um design guidelines and implementation priorities for the master plan. So you know, it's kind of. Up to you to guide a course that you think is prudent based on um you know, public participation. Based on what you know to be kind of happening in terms of um demographics and you know, key. Statistical changes in the community, trends in the planning and development field. And then also, you know, aspirations and um and kind of market realities that you have. So. There's, there's a lot of inputs into the master plan and and it's kind of up to you to um feel that you have. Captured the proper balance. Now, you know, one of the the uh items that some of my planning commissions struggle with. Is that you don't have um fiscal authority. So you know, it I know a lot of people in your seats and and sitting in your walking in your shoes. Kind of feel unclear as to your responsibility or even kind of authority or ability. To recommend improvements that you don't have control over um appropriating funds towards. So you know, an important thing to consider is that, you know, in your master plan, we will be. Suggesting projects, you will be agreeing on prioritization of those projects. But you are not um obligating the city to undertake those projects and further. If city council feels that, you know, the master plan is strong and it's something that they buy into. The hope is that they go to your master plan when they're preparing their capital improvement plan. And when they are finding the ability to fund infrastructure and other um improvement projects throughout the city. So you know, kind of um think of this as vision, um goals and. You know, an action plan and and that's why it's a twenty year plan. So I I know I just sort of sermonized for a very long time, but I don't know. I don't know that we've actually kind of talked about it in that regard before. And I just, I I hope that that makes sense to you all.
Thank you, Ms. Traxler.
Yes.
Any questions?
Oh, good, thanks. Um and if you have any questions as you start getting, if you are inclined to look through the survey results. Just let let me or Danielle or Paul know and we'll we'll answer them. So in terms of the master plan key themes. We have drafted a future land use map for you and um we won't be getting into parcel by parcel. You know, level details tonight. What we, what we um ask of you sort of as as a homework assignment and then. Also ask of you just sort of um in terms of patience is first. If you have time, um please do, you know, look at the especially the future land use and existing land use maps. And kind of spot check areas that you're particularly familiar with in the city. You know, we have um good data that we went into this, but there's not a single first draft of any future land use map. That doesn't require adjustment. So um the second part in terms of patience is that Danielle, Paul, me. You know, our partners at the city, the attorney, the engineer, DPW. All of us are gonna be working on looking at these materials over the next, you know, number of months. So while you're looking at it, if you find anything, please do let us know, but also know that, you know, we're gonna keep. Looking in and drilling in further and further and further and double and triple checking things. So what this presentation focuses on are the future land use designations that we have created in this draft master plan. I I think all of you um. Have been on the planning commission to receive sort of the the one-on-one, what is a master plan? Um what's the purpose of it? But um we'll never go broke by, you know, stating things. That may feel obvious and I just wanted to um remind folks the importance of the future land use map first. The future land use map um is at a parcel level detail. So each one of you. Owns or occupies or rents, you know, land in the city of Fraser that you could locate on this map. And what these designations indicate is the stated land use goal and intention. For how each parcel of land should be used in the future in Fraser. Now, so that's a land use policy and a long range plan for how it'll be used. And that works in concert with your zoning ordinance and zoning map. Which on the other hand says how each parcel of land in Fraser is allowed to legally be used today. So when someone approaches the city of Fraser to um ask for zoning change or rezoning on their on their. Land or on land that they wish to develop. What we'll do is break out the master plan, which I'm sure will be well worn and already, you know, halfway implemented. By that time, but um you know, we look at the future land use map and we read through the narrative and, you know, the map designation. And we put that in a rezoning review that indicates whether the request is consistent with your master plan. So this is a one of the most important ways that we judge your zoning and it's as Clark indicated earlier. This is how um we start implementing your master plan is by um potentially creating new zoning districts. To be consistent with your future land use map and um it is truly the legal foundation for zoning within Fraser. So this is um this map is a nuts and bolt bolts, very important component of the master plan. Getting into the concepts that we've written here. And I hope I'm not um talking too much or going too slowly, but you know, obviously there's, you know, it's a it's a lot of material. We've incorporated um and talked, I think, throughout this planning process about some key issues. First. Is that um you know, going back to the Utica Park Apartments project. I think at that time, there was a certain level of excitement for a housing type. That hasn't been developed routinely in the city, you know, recently, let's say. Now, whether that categorizes as missing middle type housing or not. We have talked uh throughout this planning process about finding areas to strategically plan for. Um a middle density, middle um missing middle type housing. So those are things like town homes duplexes, excuse me, and attached single um family units. Now, this is not a new concept and it has been in your plans and it was in your draft plan and you know, those of you. Who are around um in your, you know, last drafting process know that, you know, this isn't radical or in. Or the first time that the city has talked about it, but we'll talk about specifically how we are suggesting to do that. What we're. Projecting for that transitional residential area is to have it be a transition or kind of a buffering land use. Between your single family neighborhoods, really kind of the core of your neighborhood areas. Between that and your multifamily residential areas and also as a meat um land use to surround your central business district. So when we talk about, you know, kind of um. Focusing energy on the CBD and getting boots on the ground, this is a nice way over time. To find folks who will be um patronizing CBD um uses, restaurants, shops, offices. And so on and so forth. In the central business district, I think, you know, this is probably something that we will spend time refining and discussing. And focusing on over the next couple of months. I've already spoken with Commissioner Warnock, um you know, preliminarily. About how we um have approached this. Danielle and I took some time talking about the energy that has been put into your central business district. And Fraser over the years in terms of a rich history of planning. Even, you know, um establishing a DDA. I don't think you established a tick uh tax increment finance district or a mechanism to fund the DDA. But um you know, really doing important planning work there over time. And you know, we have the strategic development plan from when that DDA was prepared. Randy, I I just as an aside, I did um spot check those parcels and they were excluded from the DDA, the single family residential. So we can, we can follow up on that later. Um so so you know, in city hall. Where Paul and I sit, we look out the window across fourteen mile at a, you know. Underutilized shopping center, you know, with um a smoke shop and um, oh geez. And I wanna say, yeah, restaurant, Raymond, you know, some investment um office or tax preparer or something. And we know that there are other sites like that, you know, peppered throughout the the downtown, the formal downtown district. For for whatever reason, whether it's, you know, unwilling property owners who are sort of sitting on um underperforming land. Or other or other reasons, the um development that's been prescribed by. or other, or other reasons, the development that's been prescribed by past plans hasn't taken off. So our thought was to separate out, you know, and kind of even make more compact the idea of your central business district into a core area. And then create a fringe along Utica and surrounding a couple of other areas in your downtown district where the mixed, the mixture of uses, the mixed use development isn't required or emphasized as much, but rather it's high, high quality designed, single use businesses that are attractive and nice gateways into the CBD. So the thought here isn't to keep expanding area that's available or to, you know, to focus on a small resources, but rather to even, you know, kind of hold it closer to our chest so that an impact could be made if and when the city does start funding these downtown improvements. So I kind of want to leave you with that concept and, and we'll talk about it at length over the coming months, I'm sure. Um, now in regards to Grossback Highway, which, you know, we've been discussing at length tonight, we created a flex corridor district overlay land use designation. And what this, what this would take is specifically a, a new zoning district, an overlay zoning district for the Grossback Corridor. And I actually just had another master plan adopted in Hazel Park. And we rolled this concept out there and it was really heavily supported by the county and, and the local government. So what we are talking about here is being a little bit more permissive with the uses on the parcels of land up and down Grossback Corridor, Grossback Highway, but emphasizing how the sites are designed and improved. So when I say permissive with the uses, I don't mean that people can necessarily just by right do more and more intense development, but rather, you know, kind of open it up to what is being requested or demanded as long as it's not a locally undesirable land use. Paul and I just were reviewing a proposal for a personal training facility. And it wasn't consistent with the way the zoning district is written for the industrial district. Now, do we, I think it's a fabulous test case actually for the corridor overlay because, you know, we wanted to find a way to say yes and, and maybe are still going to be able to find a way to say yes, we'll see. But it's not necessarily a use that we would want to write into every single industrial district in Frazier, right? You know, you might not want to see that on Malin or Malin, I always mispronounce that. You know, buried within a different industrial park. But Grossback, it really might be an appropriate use. So that's something that you put in your overlay policy rather than bury it in a zoning district that would apply throughout the city. So we, you know, we'll, we'll continue to answer questions and, and, and we hope that as you review that section of the plan, that it makes good sense to you. We also created a Parks and Planned Bike Facilities map, which is consistent with the, the plans that Macomb County has in place, specifically a plan called Mobilize Macomb. Now, the, you know, I wanted Danielle to really kind of share what the source of these plans and information that we've drafted for your consideration are. And it really is to link Frazier to your neighbors and to have, you know, complete networks within town. So the dark green lines are planned bike facilities and then the light green are your parks throughout towns. So what this proposal does is to provide connections to major regional planned bike facilities, like the Freedom Trail in Clinton Township. And it provides flexibility to implement various types of bike facilities are best suited for each corridor. So we're not prescribing, for example, something as resource intensive as a protected bike lane on every single street in Frazier, right? You know, sort of a triage approach where you're, where you're looking, even looking in the future at what the best design treatment is for those, for those corridors. So what we're showing on the map are future locations for facilities, but not prescribing how those would be necessarily designed, but rather just giving suggestions. The map includes connections to schools, municipal buildings, parks, commercial centers, employment centers. And also we have provided information on, you know, safer multimodal crossings and transportation planning for the safety of all users, all legal, legal users of roads in Michigan, which is a requirement of the Planning Enabling Act to provide for something called complete streets. And again, a complete street is something that addresses all accommodation for all legal users of a road from pedestrians to motorists. Another requirement of the Planning Enabling Act is a zoning plan. And what this is, is a kind of a, a decoder chart that says the future land use category. So on the left-hand column, these are all of the mapped districts on your future land use map. And then in the right column, it's the appropriate zoning district. So we have one new recommended zoning district, and that is the Flex Overlay District for Grossback Highway, which I just described. And then we have a list of the corresponding zoning districts for each of the future land use categories. So again, this is another piece of the puzzle, A, for implementing your master plan by saying, gee, how will we make sure that the policies that we want for large lot, single family residential are properly implemented? You would go to the table, look at the corresponding zoning district and then review the corresponding zoning district for its consistency with the master plan. And then the second part of that is that this is another way to verify that proposed zoning changes are consistent with your master plan if someone's proposing rezoning. It seems very obvious, but it wasn't a requirement before and communities didn't always clearly articulate which zoning district matched up with which future land use designation. Um, so specifically, we are promoting a variety of housing types and specifying density under each one of the residential zoning district categories. We have commercial zoning district recommendations, best planning practices for flexibility and consolidation, specifically that CBD core emphasis, and then the creation of the fringe. And then guidelines for zoning steps on how to achieve the traditional CBD high quality development. And, you know, a wealth of information from other plans that I want to make sure are properly brought forward in this draft. So that's another kind of big area, I think, for my next round of review is to make sure that the, the good downtown planning work was properly captured in this draft. We created a short section related to sustainability and resiliency. We featured site design landscaping, water and building material construction techniques and suggested steps that the city could take to educate and implement, you know, residents and property owners on sustainability and resiliency in the city. And then we've started, you know, including the implementation plan, which is where, where the city will find its playbook in a step-by-step action plan on how to implement the master plan. I think that we have covered a lot of these items. One thing that I wanted to draw a connection to from our early conversations to now is that, you know, we really think that the AARP livability guidelines that we shared with you early on are, you know, really being promoted in the promotion of a variety of new housing types in that CBD fringe transitional residential and other underlived or vacant development areas. And then also the bikeability and walkability and multimodal map that is in there is also important for, you know, kind of carrying forth the, the research and study that we did on the AARP livability guidelines. I want to consider also writing into the implementation plan, seeking a designation under the corresponding AARP program and seeing if the county would maybe champion a pilot project with Frazier to do that. Because I think it is kind of beyond the city's staff resources to go about that effort. But I think it's really consistent with the county's ideas and priorities for how they want communities to develop. Okay, let me see here. I'm not going to, you know, read all of these. But I will say that, again, just one last thing about the CBD, you know, that I think we are going to have a priority to initiate the revival by means of reinstating the DDA, creating a DDA plan and exploring the feasibility of creating a tax increment financing district so that there is public funding to start implementing these, these improvements in the downtown area. And finally, on next steps. Um, tonight, you know, I've presented a substantially complete draft master plan. That's not to say that there is not still a lot of work to be done, but the foundation and a lot of the background work, I think, is, is firmly in place here. What we'll ask of you, if you have any tonight or over the next week or so, if there are areas where you would like additional clarification, follow-up discussion, or have any questions on, and by you, I mean even individuals, you know, to please let us know. So it is absolutely appropriate for any of you to contact us by email or by phone, you know, with any questions or areas that you'd like to us to explore further. And that's something that we can, you know, focus on answering or addressing for next month's meeting. It's a lot of material and it takes planning commissions, you know, a handful of meetings to walk through something. So I noted in the memo that at the end of next week, Danielle and Paul and I will be giving the, the document to our graphic design team to, you know, start laying out. That doesn't mean that it'll be final and can't be changed. But next month, when you receive your revised copy, as will, you know, always kind of be in a, a habit of revising it until it has, you know, reached sort of important touch points. So next month, you'll see something more graphically interesting with more photographs and, and it will be easier to read as well. Commissioner Freina, you have your hand up if, if you don't mind me chair Zarnaki calling.
Go right ahead.
Is, will it be in English then?
You guys, you're not allowed to ask that question anymore. I'm sorry, that's, that's our graphic designers. I just, I wanted to keep reminding you of how cool it's going to look and, you know, how, how neat the layout is. So forgive me for including those. I just, it's always been a way to suggest. Sorry for any confusion again.
I just wanted you to know that I was reading the pages.
E Pluribus and Uno, right? So, you know, the, the schedule that we've laid out, I think, is, is aggressive. And I can very easily see you wanting to take at least January to continue reviewing the plan. So the way I wrote it here was that you would consider recommending that the city council trigger the distribution requirements in December. But especially if we're doing, you know, some minor modifications and building in a little bit more detail along Grossback, I think that we should maybe agree to just assume that you're going to want to talk about it for at least December and January still. Commissioner Freina.
If, if you don't get it in before budget season, it won't get looked at, I don't think, until next year.
Right.
You know, because when budgets come out, everything else is put aside.
So, um, let us, let us work our magic. I think, you know, a, a question. Okay, great. So we'll see where we are in December then.
I think if we need to meet, you know, more than just once a month for this, I mean, I'd like to get it done. It's great.
Okay, wonderful. So we will talk then. I was going to say, another thing we could think about would be another November meeting. I don't, I don't mean to offer that out of turn. But if you, you know, wanted another discussion meeting, you wouldn't have the revised version. So I, I suppose, you know, maybe a meeting the second or third week of December would be more desirable than another November meeting for the same content. As soon as you move it on to city council, we will give a detailed presentation to them. And we'll use this basis of, you know, a presentation as we move forward and keep on adding things depending on the body to which we're presenting. Now, city council then triggers the distribution of the draft to your neighbors. So you're familiar with that, right? Having reviewed Warren's and now Clinton Township's design guidelines recently, your neighbors and the county and SEMCOG and utilities and on and on will be given the opportunity to review the draft master plan and provide that comment. I actually, I can't remember whether Macomb County has a formal review process similar to Oakland County or not, but we, we will find out soon. What that does is trigger a 63-day comment period. And I think at that time, though it's not required by the act, it is a best practice for us to make sure that that draft plan is easily findable on the state's website or linked, you know, from our webpage at McKenna to the city's social media, you know, just kind of easily available and promoted for residents to review as well. Then, once the 63-day comment period is closed, the planning commission conducts a public hearing. And after the public hearing, if you haven't received any feedback that makes you want to change direction to the extent where you couldn't just simply attach a handful of housekeeping type conditions to your adoption, you can consider adopting that plan. And then you would also consider recommending adoption of the plan by city council. So both planning commission and city council adopts the plan, which is a little different from what you're used to, where you're normally are recommending board to city council, right? So here you have, you know, special authority and it is your plan, it's the planning commission's plan. But the legislative body is given the ability to also adopt it. And then starting next summer, we'll begin implementing the plan. And we can talk about ways in which communities and planning commissions actually work towards implementation. I have a lot of clients who create subcommittees to focus on, you know, small implementation tasks that volunteers such as your, well, I suppose you're not quite volunteers, but could be considered volunteers. Volunteers such as you, you know, kind of take ownership of and, and work with the planner to move forward. So there's a lot of ways that you can make an impact even yet after you've adopted the plan. And we will move into that phase after it is adopted.
Sarah?
Yes, Randy.
And this might be a question for Clark too. I, you know, we've really never had a chance to really sit and do any workshops or anything with it. And we're moving fast now because we didn't do it earlier. And it's so hard on Zoom to sit as a, as maybe even a couple, but to not violate the Open Meetings Act. Instead of just like one-on-one with me getting with you or something, if we can get a couple of people together and use the time that you're in there one day, I'm willing to get with some people. And I, I think we really could discuss some of these things. I like that flex corridor thing and that. There's a lot of questions I have right away then of. There's a lot of questions I have right away then of, once you put it into the master plan and we want, that's a new district. Do we, what do we, we just got to go through the, to get it in the zoning ordinance? Do whatever we have to do then. What's the, how does that period work? We'd have to wait till this is adopted or do we do it ahead of time?
I think you could work on it concurrently because you could even adopt an overlay district without it having been prescribed in your master plan. You know, if you feel, if you feel reasonably comfortable that that's the direction which the city wants to go. And I do feel like you would likely have support on council, you know, on that. I think that you could get started writing that district.
I think we had, because when we did this before with the industrial district and brought in some different uses, like what sounds like what you're doing there. And we did some things that weren't industrial uses. They were commercial or fitness things or we had a bounce house and things like that. So that's an ideal district right there to keep, the, the main reason is not to have empty buildings. We've got something that, that, that helps occupy a building and it takes change in the use a little bit. It's a perfect district, the, the Groceback Corridor.
Yeah.
So I'm all for all that and I just.
Sarah, is overlay district going to be like a, an option thing or is that mandatory?
I think that the way that we would propose it would be that it's a city-initiated rezoning of all the properties with frontage along Groceback.
Okay.
Commissioner Farina.
Hi, Sarah. I had asked Doug before he left and Randy was going to try and dig up something, couldn't. We had talked about implementing the, the sign thing that we did many years ago.
Yeah.
And looking at how that, and I go through this and I was looking at the, the plan that you gave us. And I don't see anything in there anyplace about signs or anything in that, in that nature. Are we not getting down to that level at this point?
No, I think that, I think that that's a really good point, Commissioner Farina. I think that we, if we don't list signs as an important aesthetic and beautification and sort of site development component, we absolutely should. And in the context of your question about the sign ordinance, we did find the old draft on the network at City Hall. So, yes, so the sign ordinance is absolutely a very high priority for the city to amend. And actually, Paul and I have been working on kind of chunking out recommended zoning ordinance rewrites. And getting, getting that in front of city council for that, for their approval because.
Did I get a copy of that?
Of our proposal or the ordinance?
Both.
Yes.
No, the, the old sign order, the old signed recommendation is what I've been looking for.
Yep. So one thing that you'll need to keep in mind is that it's going to have to be substantially rewritten because, you know, of the Supreme Court case that came down after that. But what we can use it as a basis for and as a starting point is time, manner, and place type recommendations. So how long is a sign allowed to be up if it's a temporary sign? What is the manner in which it's required to be developed? Is it, you know, as we were saying, monument sign? Are there, you know, specific materials that are required or colors that are prescribed? And then in terms of placement, also, you know, what is the size and what are the setbacks and stuff? So those, those kind of physical features in the ordinance draft are things that we will use as a starting point in addition to what your current ordinance is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Is your presentation complete, Ms. Traxler?
Oh, it is.
Okay, thank you. Is, are there any other questions or comments from the board members? I don't see any. So I am assuming that we will, as a team, possibly be meeting again, hopefully, maybe in an additional meeting to discuss master plan, if we can do that. And, and ask Ms. Traxler too, to look into the city council agenda items and see if we can't streamline our master plan into their items within the budget timeframe.
That sounds great. And I do really like Commissioner Warrenick's idea of having, you know, small groups of folks. So if anyone's interested in sort of having a deeper dive as part of a small group, if you would let me or Chair Zarnaki or both, both of us know, maybe. I think it would be good just to keep, you know, keep folks in the loop. I could also, why don't I handle it this way? Why don't Paul and I create a couple of windows of time over the next couple of weeks? And I will send them out to you all. And then you all can let me know if you're interested in coming in there. And then I will make sure that it's not in violation of the Open Meetings Act, working with Clark.
Okay.
That, that might be a, a better way to approach it and a little bit more, you know, open.
Okay. Good idea.
Okay, thank you everyone very much.
Okay.
Sarah.
Commissioner Farina, go ahead.
Nice job, Sarah.
Thank you.
Superb job, yes. I wanted to double check that there's no one in the audience or any comments that were on the master plan, any public comment.
We did not receive any comments on this agenda item and I will stop sharing. Stop sharing. Nope, it's just still the 12 folks that are on the screen tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go forward then with agenda item number nine, public communications on non-agenda items. I am not aware of any.
None received.
Thank you. And agenda item 10 is the zoning board of appeals member liaison report, Commissioner Farina.
We have not met, Sarah canceled our meeting. And I, I understand there may be a December meeting. Is that true, Sarah?
Yes, we actually are in the process of reviewing a proposed use variance, I believe. So, or just in receipt of an application. So that is the, that is the, the subject of a potential meeting. And we will know soon whether it's happening on time.
Okay. Agenda item number 11, commissioners' comments and items of interest and concerns. Commissioner, we'll start with Commissioner Kyle.
No concerns, but I got something I'd like to brag about a little bit.
Go right ahead.
After starting my diet a while ago, last October, my daughter asked me to run the free press marathon with her this year. And even though it was canceled, they did it virtually and we got up October 18th, very early in the morning, we took off running and we did the pre-press marathon. I don't know if you can see this or not, the half marathon. And I actually, at 62 years old, I completed it in three hours and 18 minutes.
Yay.
Now, the, the
That's terrific.
I have to do it again because I definitely want to go down to Detroit when there's 30,000 people early in the morning taking off to do it. So I will be doing it again next year.
Congratulations.
Good for you. Would you run one for me, please?
Bart, welcome to go with me, Frank.
Commissioner Cook, do you have any comments?
Yes, it's a good fellow season again, kids. So November 27th and 28th, I will be standing on the corner of 14 and Garfield selling papers. And I would like to see each and every one of you. I'll have gloves on, however we have to do it to hand out papers and make everybody happy. But that's, a lot of our fundraisers have been canceled. The dinner auction's been canceled. We have a reverse drawing that's coming up this Friday. 100 tickets that were sold out almost very fast. It was very nice. So we've been trying to do events since we had to cancel so many. And the paper sales is a big thing. That's how the good fellows started. So we want to get tradition going. And with Ms. Kelly in the city there, we have it all set. So we are in regulation to be able to do it. So if you want to drive by and hand me a dollar for a paper, it would be wonderful.
What was the date? I'm sorry.
The 27th and 28th.
Okay.
So the day after Thanksgiving, Black Friday, we're hoping to get some shoppers if they're out. And then Friday and Saturday, the two days.
Thank you.
Are you doing the auction?
No, it's canceled.
Yeah.
You mentioned a reverse drawing. What is that?
Reverse drawing was, is you have, 100 tickets were sold for $100. And the last ticket drawing is a winning ticket. So like if the, you have 100 tickets, the first ticket that's drawn, you win $100. And then every 10th ticket, you win $100. And then when you get down to the final three, first place is 2,500. Second place, I believe, is 500. Third place is 250 or something like that. I don't remember exactly the numbers, but it's pretty fun when you do it in person because you get down to the last three. And then they try to convince everybody to like maybe split the money so everybody gets the equal amount. And then you always get that one greedy person that wants to stay, you know, and win it all. But it's a lot of fun and they're going to do it. It's FaceTime on Facebook. So it'll be held at one of the members' house, houses and hopefully it'll be a success. But the tickets did sell fairly fast. So we were all pretty much impressed with that. So the community is standing behind us because we're thinking that there may be more families this year than last year with, with everything that's going on. So.
That's true.
The intake will be happening this month. So we don't know how many kids yet. So. It'll be, it'll be interesting because we're doing it all, emails, stuff like that. So there's no in-person intake for these people to come and do the paperwork and everything like that. So everything is new, just like these meetings here. You know, they're hoping that it'll be a success and people do find the website or email to get all their information in so they have everything in time. So I'll keep everybody in touch.
Is there a place to, to which somebody could send a donation if they wanted to?
You could send it right to me.
Okay.
And just, Frazier Goodfellows, you know, check me out to Frazier Goodfellows.
Okay.
You know, and it would be my address or I think it's out there somewhere. I can give it to you.
Well, I'll get it somehow.
Yeah, and then I get it to the proper channels. But we actually, money we're doing fairly decent. So we should be able to accommodate everything this year. And hopefully next year, it'll be a little bit easier. You know, so we can have more of the events and more success with some of the
I'll hope that.
Yeah. But that's it. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Bart, I'm going to catch you. I see you on the screen. Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments. I'm glad to be back. I keep getting lost coming back.
We want you to stay with us, so don't get lost. Commissioner Farina.
Hi. This has been a tough year for all charitable organizations. I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus. And of course, you know, we have a member, John F. Kennedy, we have a club, a house that has been converted into a club. Of course, we've had to cancel everything and very limited opening now. But Knights of Columbus is charitable in what it does and what we raise our money for. So to help try to get some more charitable stuff going, we're having a bottle drive. And it's going to, St. Malakia said we could use their garage. There's called a festival garage. It's out, out in our building. And if anybody wants to donate bottles, we'll take any bottles you have and we'll take them back and, you know, get them put back in and that can be a donation that, you know, you, you feel like giving to the Knights of Columbus. I don't know if you've ever been to Frazier, like Ford Frazier. They, they were one of the sponsors of Ford Frazier. They, they, they do all, all they do, all we do is charitable works, especially for special needs children, which have been in, during this holiday season are going to be hit especially hard. So if you feel inclined to drop your bottles off, we'll be glad to take them.
When is that drive?
It's going to be after every mass, which is, there's five o'clock mass, either right before mass or after mass. We'll, we'll have somebody in that building. There is a 7:30 mass, a 9:30 mass, and an 11:30 mass on Sundays. So any of those times or if you want me to come pick them up, I'll come pick them up, you know.
Where's the church located again?
It's on 14 Mile Road between Shaner and Hayes on the north side. St. Malakia is the name of it. It's a Catholic church. And if you come in the most eastern, eastern drive, east side drive and you go directly past the activity center to a garage out back there, that's, that's where we'll be collecting the bottles.
And I would even say Noon, noon would be good? Or is that a little bit too late?
On, on Sunday, yeah. I would say noon would be good.
Good deal.
All right.
Anything else?
Nope, I worked the election and I, I want to take, take time to shout out to our community. It was very, very respectful, very orderly. Virtually everybody had masks on. We had no disruptions. You know, it was done very well. The state of Michigan continues to pile things, requirements that they feel necessary. They tend to make it a little harder for the, the elections to take place. But it was all worked through. Kelly and Chelsea there did a great job in coordinating. They, I, I don't think they left until after 3:30 this morning. To, with all the absentee ballots to get out. So they did, they did a wonderful job. So I want, I want to commend them, commend the city for its behavior, the way it handled the election. And I'm proud to be a part of this, this city.
As we all.
Yes, that's a good report. Thank you, Commissioner Farina. Commissioner Perry?
None at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Warnick?
First, I want to commend John. He's my hero. I know the commitment he made to do that run and how much weight he lost in the last, over a year, whatever it was. And I, I'm trying to match him, but it's going to be tough. But that was a good job, John. You saw that I'm from, I'm at Shelby Township tonight when I had to say where we're at today. And that's because I met my two new grandkids, first grandkids are twins. And I just met them right before the meeting here. So I'm excited about that. Other than that.
Congratulations.
Congrats, yes. Keep them safe.
More fun than grandchildren.
Yes.
Yeah, if we would have known that, we wouldn't have had kids. We would have gone straight to grandkids, right?
That's true.
Nothing more fun or more expensive too, right?
Very, very true. Okay, well, personally, I would like to share something with you. Ever since I retired in June of 2018, I fell in love with playing pickleball. So I've been doing it at the senior Frazier Center up until COVID. And after that, we've been doing it outside. My, I have a good friend Lynn and I joined the senior Olympics and for women's doubles. And we came in second. And we got the silver medal. It was fun. And I hope to eventually get back to the Frazier Center once COVID's over, but yes. So it was fun. Thank you very much. Mr. Urbil, do you have anything to say to us?
I have no other comment. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Traxler?
Earlier tonight, someone made specific mention of the Dairy Queen site. And I just wanted to share without, you know, making any promises or over kind of stating the situation that I know that it's been specifically on the city administrations and building officials on our radar recently and working, I think, also with Clark's team as well. So I think, you know, it's very well understood and we're hopeful that there are
there are some tools and mechanisms that we might be able to eradicate some, some blights. So we'll keep it posted.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Andrews?
One, I wanted to congratulate Randy as, as well as I wanted to wish everybody and Kathy as well, and I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We're, all of us, I think, are anxious to be done with this COVID stuff. So I certainly encourage everybody to try to stay healthy and be safe. And because I think that if everybody does that, we're going to get through this faster rather than shorter. And I think a lot of us are anxious to get back to a new norm or whatever it's going to be. But anyway, I, it's going to be tough on all of us with this upcoming holiday season without being able to see family members the way we're all accustomed to. But we ought to all try to be kind to one another because that'll make it better for all of us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Ms. Albright, do you have any comments?
No comments at this time, thank you though.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Traxler or Mr. Urbil, I do have two. We talked tonight about the resurfacing, the thirteen mile resurfacing of the building there at thirteen and Grossback as well as the Utica Park Apartments. Did both of those plans go forward with the approval process that we did back years ago? I think the apartments was out in two thousand eighteen and and thirteen mile.
Randy and I were just talking about this the other day as well. So the Utica Park Apartments actually did perform, you know, kind of just within their, their limits in terms of polling permits and, and moving forward, so definitely. And then the thirteen mile one, I, I can double check.
Okay.
And, and certainly will.
Okay, it, it looks like they just demolished the front, so I'm assuming they're going with the re, just the refacing and so forth.
Yes, and that's something that like the, the building officials really insist on not approving plans without us confirming that it was consistent with what was approved by the Planning Commission. So it probably, you know, went through another round of checking while Doug was here and that's why it's just not, you know, on the top of my mind.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Just a gentle, go ahead, Mr. Farina.
Sir, I have one question. We've, we've okayed all these outbuildings in Myers. And I, I don't know if anybody else finds us, but I've been in there and the shelves are empty, the store's not well-kept. Is there any action that they're taking to dispose of the property or something? I mean, I'm just.
Caught wind of that and I, and I also actually haven't heard of any Meyer stores closing. If you think about stores that close, I don't think Meyer is normally one of them.
Well, I know they're moving towards a smaller model.
Right.
You know. You know. I go to other Myers around here and they're well-stocked and well-cleaned and you know, just doesn't seem to fit.
We also shop there and, and I agree with you, Frank, but when we went there last week, was the first time in a long time, the shelves were, were full.
Were they?
Yeah, and, and it's just, and my wife and I, when we walked through, we both made remarks about, it's like, wow, we haven't seen like this in, in months.
Yeah, we, we actually wrote a letter to corporate about it, you know, bothered me, so.
Maybe that's why they filled them up.
I don't know.
It worked.
And what did corporate say?
The store will contact you. And then when I wrote the second letter, the store finally contacted me. You know, after four weeks or something like that. Want to know what specific product we couldn't find.
I know for a while, there was a lot of empty shelves.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Something like soups, you know.
Mr. Urbil or Ms. Traxler, have we heard anything from Hockeyland? Are they coming forward soon?
That was my one more question I wanted to ask.
Yeah, Paul, why don't you give the update?
Yeah, sure. We just were in receipt this week of the updated traffic study. So the city engineer is in the process of beginning his re-review based on, based on their updates.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Urbil. Okay, so just a gentle reminder to Commissioners Farina, Kyle and Cook. If your reappointments still go in front of city council in time before the end of the year or the end of your term, you're still on board. You can still come on and, and join our meetings, okay? You're not going anywhere. All right, any other discussion or comments? If not, I, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Support?
Support.
Okay, I caught a support by Mr. Warnick, is that correct?
No, it was John Kyle.
Oh, thank you. All right, so it's been moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Kyle to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Traxler, you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Farina?
Yes.
Commissioner Kyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Commissioner Warnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Chair Zarnecki?
Yes. Okay, everyone be safe. Nice to see you. Hope to see you soon and the meeting's adjourned, nine PM.